How kind it is, Father, to over and over again. And we are so grateful for the blessings of this new day and the opportunity to give to each of us to serve this community. We act in leadership, your guidance, and your direction as we speak and discuss the business of this community. You ask that all that we say and do that you will remind us that we are a part of you and to serve your people well. This is part of what we ask in your name. Amen.
All right, the first item would be to the agenda. Does anybody have any favors? Take a motion to approve. First, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Give your vote. All right. Next item is the consent agenda. Any discussion on that or?
There was no previous SRO at Wagerum. I guess they were sharing it between Spring Hill and Wagerum.
That was modest.
Yes, yeah.
Without you, sir, but we got fault.
Long as you haven't allocated all the money.
Yeah, I think they were sharing with Spring Hill. So this will be permanent. All right. You do motion on the consent agenda?
I've read the items. I knew that we approved the items on that.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Let's go hear from Ms. Rager and Renew Life. You are up. You're on the deck.
Yes, sir, straighten. Straighten.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, for allowing me to come before the body. I'll be co-chair of this and other honorable committees. Dee Rainer. Um, I renew life group, we're mental provider here in Larnburg.
So that the folks watching can hear you well. Mic won't pick up too good.
Okay.
If you're standing there, it's okay.
Okay. I'm gonna have my so we are mental health providers. At a better in Larnburg, mostly at risk of adolescents with um, mental health diagnosis. Um, and just trying to figure out how to save this age group. So I come before you this morning asking for a PA funding for playground, Woodsville Road. And that Hall Street there, I passed out. So um, because we had the grass there is the housing authority over there, the playground that is not being used. Um, and this is why it's important. There's a consistent relationship between property, inequality, and mass community, mass incarceration. The total county population is thirty six ninety four. Larnburg's total population is two thousand six hundred. There are eight thousand youth below the age of eighteen in this county. Juvenile delinquency ranking is ninety six out of a hundred counties. Short-term suspensions rank one. Juvenile detention rankings is eighty four. And in a southeastern community and family services report in two thousand nineteen communities assessment study. Residents named mental health service, job opportunity, and positive youth activity are three um, top responses, what they needed to improve their lives. These were the answers in the needs of your constituents. And in a two thousand two North Carolina Kids Count project. They mentioned that Scotland County families continue to face stressors such as job loss, hunger, untreated health concerns, which have a long-term impact on children's healthy development. Further data, this study also showed that seventy point two percent of children in poor, low-income homes. And that Scotland County is ranked ninety nine out of a hundred counties in the child poverty rankings. And most often, as we know, rural communities, low-income communities are often underfunded from government resources. I come before you, this project is important. Larnburg is a big-time all-American city. We boast a small-town family living, but we love regional resources. Recreation parks are fit to improve quality of life and reduce healthcare, mental health obesity. The city of Larnburg has recreational centers. Children who live within two-thirds of a park and a playground are five times likely to be healthy within a healthy weight. Youth living in neighborhoods with multiple park facilities are more likely to be active by compared to young people who don't have access. Studies have also shown that recreation play plays a critical role in child development. Children that play are problem-solving, eat in this community, probably help crime. Playing helps with socialization skills, plays vital emotional and physical development. Children also learn valuable communication and language skills through play. When I was growing up in Larnburg, there were playgrounds in every community. I played from sun to dance. I ride through Larnburg, playgrounds are they can hear the sound of children playing outdoors and help them grow. Inspiration behind me coming for children. Children are my inspiration. I work with them every day. And also reducing chronic illnesses that are linked to lack of activity and little to no time anymore. Um, and type two diabetes caused by the decrease in physical activity. Partner activities can help children move more, fight diseases, and live longer. In two studies, your constituents asked for more positive activities and help with healthy development. And this new recreation center will alleviate those stressors for the citizens of Scotland County. Families are growing, and there's a demand for outdoor recreational activities. Funding from this body will impact the city for generations in a profound way that would transform the city and improve health outcomes. The children of Larnburg deserve to have a safe place to play, develop, and grow. Um, I want you guys to look at, I have design one and the design two. Um, you could look at the other, the details later, but here are some designs that I've reached out to a playground equipment. They are that, like, the kids deserve every this Woodsville area, I talked to Burke that informed me, uh, um, to get a quote on um, the basketball goals. And he told me decades ago, he put up those same basketball goals decades, like over twenty or so years. And I know that playground for sure has not been used in over ten years. What, I know, um, courage, that's the elephant in the room everybody's thinking about. But it didn't work before doesn't mean it can't work now. Um, the kids growing up in that neighborhood, they were whatever happened to close the park, that still park decades ago. So in essence, punishing those kids for whatever happened before. But I don't stop going to McDonald's because they get my wrong one time. I still go back. I still have the chance. Um, I've got, I have my letters of support to have to, um, Libby. Forgot to get any tin cup. But I've, I've had we have a nonprofit renewed because I also want to get other funding, grant to help with this project. So we have a nonprofit, my, and I have, you guys can pass this. Letters of support from over thirteen or fourteen entities in the community that just want something positive for the and I think this park would be a start. There's no parks in that District One area. Um, the park down in front of Ms. Biggs's area, but I don't trust my kids walking from Stewartsville Road all the way down that street. Um, they need something there. Those kids picking up to eyesore. They've never had the opportunity to get up, walk outside, and just go play. Um, I've partnered, I'm the partner with Pastor Ed's with his third base where our kids renew it when it's cold and we can't use the playground. Use his indoor facility, his recreation facility. His kids will come over to this playground. Um, I am proposing, um, hours that the playground will only be open in the winter from after school to five P M. Basically dusk. The same thing in the summer, um, the feeding program starts at eleven. So we would have it open from like eleven till about seven in the summertime. So the kids could come. I have a feeding program too, but I'll merge my feeding program with Pastor's program where they come and they play. Um, I'll let Pastor Ed speak more on the, um, how we, how this would ban. But I just go to the body. Um, because I know Dragon Park, um, wants, is asking to upgrade Dragon. And it's not me coming against Parks and Rec or saying the or, I'm saying a both. Imagine having two, three drag, Dragon Parks across Larnburg. We know and, but the, the thing is Dragon Park is coming for an upgrade. I'm coming, but let's do something new. We don't have nothing. You know, so I'm, I'm not against Dragon Park. It's Dragon Park is fighting so quickly because they're the best facility in the town, but let's that way, you know, Dragon Park isn't overutilized, but it's not fair for District One that I have to pack them up in vans when they want to go outside and play and drive all the way from Big Street to Dragon Park when I could drive them out to Stewartsville Road. Nope, that's the community that I serve, but they don't have anything to play. And I think they deserve to play. Um, I'm gonna have Pastor Ed, if you don't just address some of the aesthetics of how we would like to, or make how we would like to see it run. You will not go very
You can't go that way. Right, right here responding, I mean.
All righty. Now, as Duke knows, it's been my passion. We, we bused him in at Cross for two years prior to COVID called Kids Nighting. They have nothing. They have no transfer to Dragon Park. Their parents, uh, most of them are mamas that work two or three jobs. These kids are victims. And it's been my heart to see this, do something. I'm on housing, I thought we were working on, first of all, getting the supervision part. Number two, someone to cover the insurance, need the equipment. I'm a grant writer and the Lord's blessed me in that regards. Cross Point's gotten in over four hundred thousand in grants. I'm helping Falcon Children's Home and Dunn. They've gotten over six hundred thousand all year. I'm, I'm, I'll volunteer my service to get grants supplemented. This summer, we had a summer lunch program and I had five teachers, Sue Ellen Stanley and others that went and worked with these kids and, and fed them. Then, these two little girls ran and jumped up on my lap. And I got a, I got a soft spot for kids. And their daddy had just been murdered two days at one of the other housing projects and loving. One little girl said, you know, preacher, the last few days, we lay in the floor with our grandma. I said, why, honey? Shot's going off. If we do that, if we don't do something, we're gonna lose a generation. I've gained out of this. I'm an old, old, old fart that's got many years left. Before I leave this world, I have something. They have nothing. I've heard people say, well, there's no supervision. We'll find supervision. I'm working, Sheriff and Chief. I'm on the housing board. We'll find the supervision. We just need to help us to get and get started. Um, if I knew how to do something, I'd get out there and paint, do something, but I don't. But what I know to do is to appeal to people to please help us. These kids some are victims of child abuse. We have the highest child abuse rate in the state. Highest hunger, uh, child hunger rate. When we brought them over, Kids Night Out, we had to feed them because they were starved to death. We served peanut butter and gin. We just, little boys said, that's the best thing I had to eat, you know? They're being forgotten and the gangs are recruiting. My God, we need to do something. They need filling to volunteer. My service is in grant writing, but we need help from people, good people here to help us get this thing started. But that's my heart, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
So.
Any questions? Anybody got any?
I would. Well, first of all, thank you, Pastor Ed, for coming to us with this. What price range would this park be?
Okay, look in your packets. And I'm, I'm asking for about two hundred thousand dollars. The packets, uh, I have two designs, option one and option two. And, um,
Now, is that just for the equipment or is that for?
They're gonna come and build it and everything. Um, so the total you see on page, if you look on the go back the last this last page, I think, is each. You look on the bottom. That's the equipment amount.
Is that, that, that total sixty-five, is that labor?
One twenty-five. Here, the late, that one sixty-five one with labor comes out to be two fifty-seven, sixty-four.
The reason, the reason I asked you that question is because Mr. the, the, the bill that Dragon Park is going to be with volunteers to help get some of that labor product.
Well, we'll get there, but I, I just want to present you with a picture. So the one sixty-five one comes out total to two hundred and fifty-seven, six fifty-four. The other, the other one with the one sixty-six total comes out to be two forty-four, one seventy. Um, so that's total with the out plus the, um, warranties and everything else regarding them to come in and do things that they need to do. And we could go back because on each one of my
We only have the copy of the one hundred and sixty-five thousand. We don't have a copy of them, and I think these are the important ones.
Pass them over. I'm just a little designs. There were two.
Yeah, once that, now you say the one sixty-six is, is with two forty-four, one ninety-seven. Is that what you're saying?
The one, it's with the, the two pack, their, their packets look the same on one, but I passed up um, Mr. Gibson and Mr. Williams.
Option one mountain, option two. Some only have option one. We don't have option two. Me passing that big. You got option two. Look up top down here. Some have two, some have one.
Okay, here's
I got option blue.
Here's two and one.
We need more.
Here's two. Guys, y'all need one over here? Y'all good on one and two?
They need
They need one?
We need all of the one.
Here's one.
Option one.
Y'all got it?
Here.
Here's another one. All right.
Here's two.
One. So the build-out.
You need the one fifty-one. Is there proposals one hundred fifty-one thousand?
No, it's our one sixty-six.
One sixty-five.
And started at one sixty-five. Okay, then if you, I then, um, on my back sheet, I have to input the estimate. It's a build-out, the total. So the total for one sixty-sixty project would come to two fifty-seven. And the total for the one sixty-six project would come to two forty-four. But if you look on each one of them, I just had them about a small children's playground. We could be get rid of that, which will reduce the cost, one, see everything. But the small on each one of the renderings in option one and two, if you look, there's a small a smaller playground. But actually, the bigger playground also accommodates the smaller children. I just wanted to see something smaller for the smaller kids, but she told me even with the bigger image, it will also accommodate the smaller kids. But so we can cut some of that cost by let's not cut the smaller one. And each drawing, there's a, 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 a smaller playground. On two, it's, it would be this one. One, it would be this one in the back here.
Ms. Rainer?
Yes.
I saw your letters of support.
I saw.
Um, I have a couple questions, but I a letter from Housing Authority. I also saw the mayor and the city. Have you asked those entities for funds as well?
No, I haven't. The Housing Authority has, you could talk, from keys on the board. That's it.
Our next meeting, I plan to. Okay. You're asking us for the entire tube, wanting us to walk and, and all of us together try to come up with that?
No, I'm asking this body for the tube, because it's what we're gonna need from the other entities. We're gonna go insurance. We're gonna ask for staffing. We're gonna ask for, um, other that we're gonna need, but we got to start with the, with the, with the equipment. If we get the equipment, then Housing Authority, um, Parks and Rec, we wanna, we gotta staff as well. We gotta man it.
So is your Mamita and Renew Life?
Yes.
And Renew Life program?
Great question.
Going to operate, building as well, or just have access to the playground?
No, no, no. And the reason I have my betta is because that's the nonprofit on Renew. Because, you know, if we're gonna ask for grants, we have to be a nonprofit. So, but no, we're not gonna move any facility. We just want to be able to have unity, our kids to be able to come play as close to the facility. But I wanna get grant money and grant, and money from this body to build the playground, but not move.
My next question may be more, that's it. What is being done in that building right now?
We, we use it. We we're lunch. I'm working with the chief and the sheriff to put some little branch offices in there to do activities just to give some coverage. And they both agreed to do that. They both have keys. We just, you know, it's a matter of getting it moved in.
Building is in great shape. It's great, it's excellent shape. We going to talk to Percy as well and, and chief. Because we would like for them to, it's a nice thick office in there to have a, a satellite office. We need a police press there when the kids are there.
I know we're talking about police presence over there, but and you might ever thought about an after-school program as far as computer lab and assisting them with homework and things of that nature?
Do that to renew as well, free, out of pocket. When they come get services, I can't just not put them with homework and after-school entry we have. So we have been donated some, um, tablets. We have computer lab, but that comes under renew with every day to get services. We do that every
To answer that, um, so thank you, Chief, Chief for you. Um, is, um, at Cross Point, we just received funding for Third Base. Where kids go home to go to Third Base. We just, um, got a grant to fund the, you know, the smart board computers. And so we're gonna be partnering with her, because it's the same kids. And we have bus transportation left over, or if I need to take some of that equipment and, um, and put it over. We have five retired teachers working with these kids this summer that are ready to go and, and it's supposed to open the end of, uh, but we're partnering with her to do the same over there.
And my mom says Co-organ is a retired educator. Scott Army teaches, wow.
I, I've got a, I'm working with a group, I believe, that's gonna cover the injured playground. So that's covered. We're working on supervision. Been talking with the sheriff. Let's get me some of these officers to come over. I'm working with Housing Authority for some finances and
What kind of hours and
Um, it would probably be, I, I don't know, we've got probably after school in, in, during school time. In the summer, it's a different thing. Um, I know in the past, I've had supervised summer playground programs, which we had for four hours, which we'll be doing anyway uh, through the, you know, the summer lunch program. Uh, that's probably four to five hours in the summer and the fall right after school. And then on weekends, uh, we just, you know, four or five hours to provide that for those kids.
Yeah, these are, these are supervision of the actual playground.
We're not about to let, um, you know, kids in there unsupervised and get hurt. Uh, they've got to be supervised. I'm an old retired school teacher and that's, that's a big concern for me. So we're working to cover that.
The hours that we're proposing to, uh, we're proposing in winter. Um, hours for the playground will start after school until dusk about five o'clock. The summer and spring, we will start at eleven A M. During the summer with the feeding program up until seven. Um, but anytime school is in, the school, it would be from after school until either five or seven. Also, um, we will have that, um, third level, what is that, the barbed wire around the fence? Um, where the fence is gonna go out and have the barbed wire. We will also, um, ask for funding for law enforcement, for metal detectors.
Get in.
We're gonna also have that blackout fencing that looks like grass, so you can't see inside. So, you know, that's safety as well. Um, we're asking for cameras. Um, you know, just to metal detectors and the scanners, um, all for safety. So we, we've got some um, some good ideas about how to keep the community safe. And, and especially with the law enforcement.
You can put that weed being in that kill the kids so they can't see. Somebody said, what? Somebody can drive by and shoot those kids while they're playing. Well, they can shoot them out on the street too. I would rather have kids to have something to do than a gang. Um, I, I'll just throw this in and I'll shut up. I was driving down Dona, you know, our old church, there's a big bunch of kids in a yard and the Lord said, stop. And I had some coupons from McDonald's and Bojangles. He said, you go in there and tell them, number one, they are valued to me. I've got a plan for their life. I love them. And when they give their, when they turn to me, uh, give their hearts to me. So I, I didn't know it was a gang having a business meeting. I'm from, I'm from West Virginia. We, we don't have to any gangs. And, uh, but anyway, um, let me stand right here. Uh, I stopped there and Uh, I stopped there and this one big old young man got up behind me, like he's gonna eat me up. And I turned around, I said, you look hungry. And I said, would you like fries or you want some of Bowberry from Bojangles? I'll take fries, I gave him a coupon. And I asked their leader, I said, can I just tell you, tell you what the Lord tell, told me to tell you? I said, you're of value, he loves you, he's got a purpose for your life, you're not junk. He's got a plan inside of you, and would you turn to him? And would you let me pray for you? Uh, chief, there's about sixteen, seventeen kids there. They got in a big circle, even that big old boy was gonna rub me up in a circle, held hands, let me pray for them. And their leader come up to me, he said, you're here because my mama prayed. Said, she's a pastor, and she's been praying for me. I said, well, these are God's words, he cares about you. And I don't know what came out of that, but there's a bunch of them out there, we gotta do something. Before I leave this world, I want us to see us reaching these kids and helping them. That's my heart.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else got any questions from the father here? Ryan, we appreciate you coming, Pastor Ed.
Yes, sir.
Um, we're about to get into the, some minute today and later on into the budget for the year. Um, but we've got to have, we've got to look at our different, what's remaining of the art funds, number one, but but also, uh, Mr. Johnson's got a little, there's some new state law requirements about us giving money to nonprofits, and we have to look at that as well, about how we have to handle that or if it can be done. So, um, we'll, we'll, we'll look into that, then we will get back.
Well, Renew is for profit, my Meta is for nonprofit, so either way.
Yeah, I think correctly promoted to have to be under Meta. It has to be.
If at all.
Yeah. If at all, it'd have to be under Meta.
We could probably.
So we'll, that's one of the things we'll look.
We could probably, if it's the housing authority, were to go along with it, if if that, if that would help, we could. It's in, in right. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, thank you for what you do.
All right, moving to our next item, Mark Ward.
I need to wait on Commissioner Williams, if that's where I can meet and speak, sir.
No, go ahead, because I won't get caught.
Okay, well, um, in your package, you should have a resolution of support for Project Deep Ross. Um, this is a company that is looking to invest into the community. Um, they have, uh, there's no been public announcement made yet, but for them to start an application process, the county has to show support for their building reuse grant application. Um, and so I'm asking that you review that and that you will authorize the chairman to sign the resolution of support for that project.
Um, is the building that is intended to be reused publicly?
It is owned by the company. What happens on building reuse grants, the state gives them, the state gives a dollar amount, but it has to flow through the county to the company. So the company's building, they are being reimbursed for renovations that they're doing to their building. That's correct, yeah, but it has to flow through us.
And it is, and this is a, just a simple flow through, there is no guarantee.
No.
For this project, for this aspect.
We have to just show that we are doing something similar to what the state is. So if the company decides to locate and go forward with it, then there will be a county incentive based on a tax grant that you will off offer, and that will serve as the match that we're contributing to the project. They spend the money, they show us receipts, they show us checks, we send it to the state. The state then sends the money to our finance department. Finance department cuts a check to the owner of the building or the company, which this one, it happens to be the same person.
It is one hundred twenty-five thousand.
That is the maximum amount that they were approved for, that's correct.
All right, so you leave an action on that?
Yes.
For the resolution?
The application is due tomorrow.
Anybody?
I would move that we endorse this project and issue a resolution.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion, question? All in favor? All right, motion carries.
The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is we were, been working on truck driving training program facility at the Long Bermauksen Airport, which is now Southeast Regional Airport Authority. Um, there are some properties that the county took possession over about a year, a year plus ago. Um, there was gonna be a land swap, some of the land that the airport wanted to make theirs more whole inside of a triangle area, and then they were going to swap and give us some land behind the site for the truck driving training facility. We had to do some due diligence on the site, we had to make sure there was no contamination, because as you know, any property that the Community College has received, the county has to be responsible for it. County has to own it, county has to give them the property, county has to maintain any of the properties for the Community College. But since the Community College received it to me and the plus grant from the state, they could not take ownership of the property if there was contamination on it. So since there was a former truck washout and diesel tanks on the site, we had to do some Phase One and some soil borings. We should be receiving the letter of no former act, no other action needed from Deener, and once we have that, we'll be able to proceed with the land swap. So we will deed a certain portion, the numbers, I apologize, it's less than three acres, two, maybe two acres, we will deed to Southeast Regional Airport Authority. Southeast Regional Airport Authority will deed us about the same amount. And then we will then in turn deed the site that Southeast Regional Airport Authority gave to us and a remaining tract over to Richmond Community College for the truck driving training program. They are already started doing some architectural drawings and designs, but they can't go further until they have the property in their name. So I am asking that you authorize us to, speaking to Attorney Johnson, that we will have to do a survey on the property that we have, because currently we have a piece of property that's divided by the road, Skyway Church Road. We're gonna take the right side and LMA is gonna take the left side. Well, it's all on one tax card now, so he recommends we do a survey. And so I I I recommend that you allow us to do a survey for that, and then go ahead and do the deed swap between Southeast Regional Airport Authority and us. And then once we have that, and then we have the letter, Richmond Community College will take that information to the state to get permission to take possession of the property.
In in our breakfast with RCC the other day, McKenna's told us that they had just gotten, I believe Friday, that the soil testing was clear.
It is, that's correct, we got that, we did notify RCC of that, and we're telling them, just waiting on the letter of no further actions needed. They can't proceed till we actually have that letter in hand.
This is, this is a project that RCC has been working on for several years. They're, they're very proud of their truck driver training program. They've actually had other counties have gone to RCC trying to get them to locate this truck driver training school in their county rather than come here. Uh, and we, this is, I think this is.
So we having, we're having people from from other counties coming to the school?
Well, I've been out to them.
I've seen it out there, I've seen it too.
I, I think they only, I think they have eighteen enrolled right now, I don't know.
This is the third class, I believe. The first class, there was right at about twenty-two, twenty-three, I spoke at that graduation. Every person there that graduated had a job offer, everyone. All of them were not from Scotland County. We did offer some stuff for the ones in Scotland, but it is Scotland, Richmond, might be a little bit of Robinson, but there are some of near Anson County that were taking the classes.
Yeah, he said they had a lot from Montgomery coming in.
My, my, my question is, if we're doing it in Scotland County, we're giving land from Scotland County, should the people of Scotland County get a little bit more of a break than the people from outside of County?
You mean tuition?
Yeah.
I don't think they, I don't, I think with all the grants and programs they got now, I don't think there is a tuition.
What is it, eight, eight-week program?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they charge them for it.
I, I don't, it's a community college, you cannot give someone in one county a preference over another county.
But but I think they have a lot of assistance where it doesn't.
There are some scholarships available for it, but it is, they are having a growing need. That, like I said, they might have wanted sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, they've got a list for the next one. Um, I mean, when you can take a course that's less than six, seven months and come out and make eighty thousand dollars a year, they're gonna go.
Didn't we get an extra, um, four hundred thousand dollar workforce development? And some of that money can be used for the truck driving.
You can do incumbent job training, workforce development, they can do that in the platform, and the Workforce Development Board did pay for some people to take a truck driving training class, but it was not at ours.
The, the reason, the reason I'm bringing that up is because I've had a lot of people, which everybody knows I'm in the trucking business, but I've had a lot of people to to want to go to that, but they just can't afford it. That's in the county here, and they can't afford it. So I was wondering, what could we do with that, with that being in the county? What, what could we do for our county?
How much is a eight-week?
I don't know.
And I'm not sure it's, I'm not sure it's only eight weeks long.
Yeah, I was thinking a few months.
I think it's about.
I think it was twelve or sixteen.
Yeah, it seems like it's about.
But but what could we do on that to have the people of the county, citizens of this county?
What cost to it?
We can ask, we can ask Dell McKenna those questions.
Yeah, I think some of it is about, it's just about conversation, because if we're investing as much as we're investing.
Exactly.
Somebody just needs to go to RCC and have that conversation. Even if they have to offer scholarships to citizens.
I agree.
That can be done, it's just somebody gotta say it.
And I, and I think, and I think there's probably scholarship money available.
I, I do think, y'all are mentioning dollar amounts and stuff. Um, we inherited the property because of past due taxes, so we didn't pay anything for this property. Um, we are gonna have an attorney fee, we're gonna have a survey fee, but we don't have any hard dollars outside of that Phase One.
No, no, I, I think, I think we got that, but investment is investment.
Absolutely, I agree.
Dollars or or money, it's investment.
We can, we can ask, if you want, I can, we can ask RCC to come and talk about their truck driving program.
And we can do that, I mean, I don't want to get off the topic here, because we need to focus on what is requested.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make the motion that we do what is being requested, is that we go ahead with the survey process and the deed, the cost, whatever it takes to go ahead and to make this transfer change.
And I'll second that question. All right, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? All right.
Before we move on, I still think what we said needs to happen, I mean.
Now, I wouldn't take it away from.
I'm not against us doing it, because it's a wonderful program.
Right.
But we're constantly given and constantly doing.
Right.
Well, and it's a local incentive.
Well, and I hear that a lot, I hear that, I hear a lot of people in county who wants to go, just can't afford it. I mean, you know, you know, poverty is high in this county, so you got a lot of people that got.
Commissioner Gibson, I'm sure can help us with that conversation, he's on that board, just to see what.
We can do that, I think, yeah, we can do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to our salary study phase two, the MAPS group, and is somebody on, start the call now? Somebody's there?
Uh, yes, Becky Beazey, there we go. And this is Becky Beazey, she's the lead for the MAPS group, they did the salary study for us. For, they did, I guess now the entire county, so that's a two-year process.
Thank you, ma'am.
Excuse me. Go right ahead.
Good morning, everyone. Um, it's nice to see you in person, sort of, better than the phone anyway. Um, so I'm here this morning to answer any questions you have about the study that you received about a month ago. Um, the thing, only new information I have is that since we did the study, um, both Lee and Moore County have adjusted their ranges up again. Um, this is by far, I've been in local government H R for forty-five years. This is by far the hottest labor market we have, I've ever seen. Um, so the competition is really fierce. Um, but I think, um, you know, this, this second phase, which essentially treats the rest of your employees the same as the, um, the employees from the Phase One last year, um, is a really good step for you to take in terms of becoming competitive and hiring and also being able, hopefully, to retain your current workforce. So I'm here to answer any questions you have.
There's, there is one adjustment, or not really an adjustment, but one clarification. Uh, in there, the potential impact, I think we listed it right at one point three million dollars. After, uh, H R looked at it, and with the salary progressions that have already happened, that number has dropped about three hundred thousand, so it's about one million fifteen thousand for actual implementation for an entire year. But again, uh, what we are looking at doing is putting that in, when the board approves this, it would be implemented at the, at the beginning of the, the next beginning pay cycle.
In March, we do it today.
Yeah, so that means, uh, we're only paying for, uh, four months, which has already been allocated for in the current budget.
So, Mr. Patterson, am I understanding correctly that if once we pass this, we've brought everybody up to the status that we, we want to put them, there's not another part of this that?
Right.
That is correct, this brings the rest of the, where were the others already?
Well, you said some of them won't be getting a raise, is that correct?
Some guys last year, or some, some people may have already been, their salary may have already been where.
My concern was some of the lower bottom of the token program. It's always been my concern, making sure that we don't forget about them, bringing them at the level that is compared to the other counties.
Right.
More of those counties, where our custodians and parsonage workers are making five and six thousand dollars less than our neighboring county.
Right, uh, they are addressed as well.
I had one call with the sheriff that had questions, um, because in the study, it talks about some captains going, should be lieutenants or whatever, and and my thought, my thing to grasp was to everybody is that we're not voting on changing a bunch of job codes or whatever. What we're voting on is is looking at the range for the drop, the job codes. So all that stuff will be hashed out, you know, as far as what code they go into, that kind of thing, as we need, if it's needed, right?
And Becky interviewed, um, when she was going through the actual interviews there at the Sheriff's Department. I think, Becky, you also had a conversation with the sheriff? Were you able to have a conversation with the sheriff?
Yes, um, that, um, what, um, you've asked us to do is help create equal pay for equal work. Um, and what we found is that there wasn't equality in the level of responsibility in some of those jobs, that, um, some of the captains, for example, were managing, you know, thirty, thirty-five people, and some had two. Um, and it just wasn't equivalent, and so that's the reason. I actually talked with the management of the Sheriff's Department and was under the impression they agreed with me. Um, so I, I'm not sure, you know, exactly what, um, has happened since.
After our discussion yesterday, I think he was satisfied that, that we're not looking at changing people's position. All we're doing is setting the ranges for the job codes and then the, all the other stuff that they, he can deal with, whoever deals with that, so.
Yeah. Um, Mrs., I know in our last conversation with the salary study, there was some talk about, I think from Miss Becky, consolidating H R between throughout the county, is that gonna be impacted through this, or is that gonna be?
That is management recommendation, and from what is listed in the book, this could be in consolidation with maybe a one to five-year plan. But that's just recommendations from her to, um, our management to.
So it's not something, just because we passed the salary, so that that?
Right, right, these are just recommendations that you all made you to do or not do, but this is just, uh, recommendations to put in maybe a short-term or a long-term plan.
Did she, did she address the issue of duplicate services as far as several positions doing the same thing? As far as reorganizing and that.
Yes, that was, that was part of it. Becky, can you, can you speak to that?
Yes, you're, um, within, you're, y'all are so decentralized with your H R function that there's a lot of duplication, and it's much less efficient. Um, we, I have not seen that in other counties. So what we're recommending is creating, you know, bringing folks together and then dividing out duties so that you're actually getting more done, uh, with the same number of people that you have now. That's not act, if you adopt the plan today, you're not adopting that. That's not act, if you adopt the plan today, you're not adopting that. That's a separate kind of recommendation that, um, management would need to look at and, you know, talk about some more. Um, but that's just something I want to make you aware of, is that you're not getting full utilization of the staff you have because there's so much duplication and decentralization.
And not that I don't think that's a good idea. I just want to make sure, I don't want us to adopt a, a big umbrella and then a lot of things start falling.
Yeah.
And we not realize that this is.
That's recommendation only.
Yeah, that's not part of what you would adopt if you adopt the classification and pay plan.
All of the motion that we, um, get, accept the salary study as it's been presented so that we can bring the rest of our staff into the range that they're supposed to be in.
I second that. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion or questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Veezy.
Thank you all. I've enjoyed working with you.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, Becky.
Now that we restart our meeting over again, Sandy's here. All right, so moving on into the, uh, the, the policy discussions that the policy committee had. And Susan, are you taking that? Kevin?
Uh, well, the, uh, we have a number of policies on here. Um, the first four, annual leave, sick leave, overtime and compensation, um, those policies are text changes only. And rather than going through each of those, they were discussed before the policy committee. The policy committee had no questions and recommended their approval. So unless there are specific questions, I would ask just the free board to consider those together.
That's A through D?
A through B.
So y'all good on those?
Yeah, we're pretty much good on those.
No major, no major change?
And the biggest change was just because we were going from monthly payroll to a semi-monthly payroll, we just needed to make some technical corrections to these policies to make them.
Reflect.
Yes.
Reflect what we were doing. Yes.
Okay. So then, then, you know, we're into the E, which is travel reimbursement. I think that's, so now they, uh, rewrite or how you wanted it done, if you want to talk about the changes in that.
So the major changes in the travel policy was to bring the mileage rate up to ninety percent of what the federal tax rate is at any given point in time. Um, and I guess our timeframe we were using January first. So if, uh, the, whatever the rate is in January first, that'll give us an opportunity to implement the ninety percent in our July first, uh, budget cycle. Uh, so right now, I think we're recommending, uh, the ninety percent. I don't remember what the tax rate is right offhand, but starting March first through June thirtieth, they're going ahead and increase the mileage reimbursement rate up to the ninety percent. And then July first, we'll have a new percentage or new rate uh, to implement with our July first budget. Uh, the other item that, um, I was requesting was when mileage sheets are turned in. Uh, we have a lot of people that return them in annually or, uh, quarterly. Uh, we want to get them on a, um, at least a monthly cycle so that when finance receives them, we can get them implemented into the next payroll. And if the mileage sheets have not been turned in by the following month, for the previous month, then the employee forfeits their mileage request.
And tell the reason for that because I found that interesting.
Uh, the, the reason, uh, the reason for that is that a lot of times in, in June, we get files of mileage requests and that actually hurts us at the end of the year because we are not prepared to be hit with thousands of dollars worth of mileage. So that, that is my request is to shorten the timeframe so that we can get the mileage turned in more timely than what it is at this point.
You don't have, you don't have a budget for, for the mileage?
There is a budget.
An isolated budget?
There, there is an S budget, but when you get hit at the end of the year, that, that budget, for instance, might be two thousand dollars. We might have somebody come in with, or if you take the, the whole department, it may come in at more than that. So we're having to move monies around within the department to cover the mileage. And if we're on a month-to-month cycle, we can keep better track of what's going on as they're turning in.
And that, I'm pretty sure the other, I know a city has a policy school system. I think theirs is more stringent than that, it's seven days once you retire.
I, I, I feel like that might be too stringent, so we may give it this.
It's tough, it's tough, but it's more your money.
Yeah, but at least this way you won't be getting six months later.
Correct.
The question is, do, do we serve the same geographical area? Why would the mileage be substantially different than the past?
I don't understand.
You're talking about the reimbursement rate?
Yeah. We've not updated the mileage rate.
Oh, it's, it is.
Since twenty.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I know what you're talking about. So it, it's the, uh, the rate that throws it out.
Yes.
Well, the federal rate right now, I quote me if I'm wrong, I think it's sixty-five and a half cent a mile.
Yeah, okay.
And we're currently at forty cent.
Yes.
And so this proposal by Becky, ninety percent of what the federal, we don't have to come back every year and adjust.
I understand that, no. I understand. I was just thinking mileage was determinate and I didn't think if, if you had the same job and did basically the same driving one month wouldn't affect it. But if you do it at a rate, that is a different amount. I understand.
Okay, so then we'll move into the last item, the work from home policy, uh, or flexible work policy, whatever we want to call that. Um, there is a, an, uh, should be in your packet and, and the, in the red is the items that, I don't want to use the word change because we really didn't have a policy before on any of it, but maybe that's the changes to my roughly draft type, type draft. Um, without all my punctuation errors or whatever in it, some other changes in it. Um, the, I guess the big, and a lot of it's a lot of here twos and there fours and, and, um, to, I wanted to ask a question of Susan and Kevin, have we checked with our workers' comp carrier on their coverage or do they look at our policy? What do they do? How are they gonna, are they gonna take any difference stance on the work from home? Should they do? You, you follow what I'm asking? Do you just, are they requiring anything different or are they a premium different?
I don't think there'll be a premium differential, but they, um, Lori handles the workers' comp. I don't know if they've had that conversation, but I know, of course, if they're within, um, work, then they are covered under workers' comp.
No, I get it. I just didn't know if the, if the underwriter would have a different approach on, or requirements or whatever on it in there to be able to cover that, you know? Because I don't want to, I don't want to have something there that they're gonna say, oh, we don't cover that.
In the, in the pool, they've not, there's been no discussion about limitation from remote work. They don't differentiate.
And counties and even the state offer this type, so.
No, I know, yeah.
It's, it's.
I just didn't know if we had that conversation with. Um, so, and, and again, a lot of this is.
Lori did, uh, say that the preference of the work, uh, work from scot for insurance is that there is a defined space and there are defined hours.
Which we address all that.
Yes.
Um, you know, the, the, the item, there's also an agreement in here that the employee must sign with the department head. Assuming that it's a department head, then Kevin would be the one to sign that. And there's also a checklist policy, uh, some things about IT having to check the, the internet. Um, but if you go to section five, which is page four of that, paragraph H, um, you know, I, we, I had originally typed it as a maximum of five days within a thirty-day or a calendar month. And, and some folks wanted to change it to sixty percent of the work time, which is basically one to three days a week. Is that right, Susan?
Yes.
Okay. Um, with an exception that can be made by the county manager or accommodation or the ADA, which probably would be very rare, but, but it's there in case it's needed, or in the case of a state emergency declared by the board chair. Um, so I wanted to make sure everybody here, because I know we've had discussions on that about the number of days percent of work time and if anybody had any.
So if, if, if we do it at the sixty percent, or, or, you know, sixty percent, then that really, some of those that were listed kind of the same thing that they were doing before, because some are one to three days or so. So that really changed it.
Right.
Most of, most people would not be changed. And there was discussion in the policy committee that this change not, not impact the SS, at least until some type of expansion happened, because right now they're in a one day in the office rotation with their workers. Uh, but the policy committee, I think, had a consensus that they were not interested in changing that at this time.
Yeah, I think.
And that's in this document.
Section six addresses that, that the DSS will remain under their current policy until they got a space. Yes, sir.
Well, at the county attorney's conference, there was quite a bit of time spent on, um, for obvious reasons, including our local registered Ds, there's been a lot of security breaches. There was some conversation about counties having insurance for breaches of that nature and a lot of different requirements for that. I don't know whether we have any and I don't know whether this would change anything about our coverages or people working from home, but I think it's important that the IT people be sure that these people are working remotely um, or in a situation where the, um, information that they're, um, privileged to retains its confidentiality and is protected. And I don't know whether we even have insurance to cover that as part of the program or not.
We do, uh, we do have cyber liability. Uh, as a matter of fact, it's not a formal requirement yet, but it was already discussed that we go to multiple, uh, multi-factor.
Two-step authentication.
Uh, which IT's been working on. That's, um.
We got an email yesterday, but.
Yeah, so that will be happening, um, within the next month, uh, you know, and also with this, uh, a lot of the data that the people who are already working remotely, like DSS, they're actually remoting into state servers. And, uh, any of our people who finance, they remote in and they come to a secure network uh, to get into, uh, finan, uh, into our financial software. Uh, so there is authentications that way as well.
I don't know if it enters the, uh, state program, but I would suggest that, uh, if there is someone that does that, that they take a look at these requirements and be sure they're adequate for, so that we have the coverage we intend to have and we don't have. This is something that, that there's an effort to exclude coverage on if we, if we have a breach because we had a terrible time with that registered D breach.
Yes.
Just be sure that the information is secure.
But in all fairness, that breach was not, we didn't cause it.
No, it was a multi-count. No.
It was their national server.
That's just an example of what happened.
Well, it's, or the, the people that are working at home, do they have our computers or do they buy their own computers?
No, it'll be had to be county's.
Well, that's addressed in here. Um, the, the IT person is responsible to verify their data signal with a Wi-Fi or direct or whatever they're doing, that that's secure. And if they're not using a county computer, which already should be checked, that that computer has to be checked to, to make sure. But when we talk, I think anybody's using, everybody's using a laptop.
Everybody's been issued a county laptop that lives remotely.
Do we have to get a ride for that sort of coverage, Kevin?
It is, it is, it is in our standard. There's a specific aspect for cyber libel, or for cyber secure, uh, cyber coverage in our policy.
So when they come to the office, they bring that laptop to the office and work off laptop or they got a different computer here?
No, just like.
They just work off that pool.
Just pick it up and.
And then when they connect it into the county network, at that point in time, if it's not actually done remotely, uh, antivirus, it is also automatically updated as well.
But that's on the computer, so.
Yes.
I think the IT part checking the Wi-Fi is just to make sure that's a secure, it's a secure network rather than open network. You're not sitting at McDonald's parking lot using their open Wi-Fi to do with, uh, I, I don't think that would happen, but, but that's covered in that.
I just want to make sure we have a, a bridge that we have planned this cover by the policy.
Anybody else? Anybody got anything else? Any changes or wordings or different, whatever?
The sixty percent again, which is a one to two, one to three days is what you all are recommending as a policy.
That's correct.
Now, sixty percent is sixty percent in the office, sixty percent.
Not to exceed.
Speaking of me, I was leaving it at the five, but there was some discussion that they needed it to be sixty and I said, we'll put it in, then we'll discuss it as a body and see what happens. And then I think that's what I said.
And I just went by the wording, the one, two, three days, and the maximum was three days of remote work. And I just did three divided by five to come up with sixty, because one, two, three days, I just used the maximum three days to get that sixty percent.
And some of the conversation was if you're going to limit it to five days a month, you're really removing any effectiveness of letting them.
I guess my only concern is, you know, there, there are some things when, when the public who you serve comes to see people, they need to be able to see who they come to see, if that makes sense. And, and so I'm hoping, Kevin, you'll use the judgment. When I hear from people that I went to see and you have to make an appointment to see that person and sometimes two, three days before you hit back from that person, then I don't feel like we're doing our due diligence about providing services to the public as they need it.
There, there are positions that are not eligible, uh, for work from home.
Just for the nature of the position.
But there are some that work from home, who people are not able to get their hands on to when they need to.
Most of the ones that work from home serve internal clients. Uh, and if you're working from home, uh, phones should be forwarded so that if I call your extension, it rings in your house, uh, or on your cell phone. Uh, you're available for meetings. You can either come, you're expected to either come in or if it's there that you can remote in.
I hear it's supposed to work. I'm telling you what I know.
Right.
That does not work that way for a lot of, for a few things, positions that I know of. I mean, just this morning I was told by a person, they've been trying to get up with this person and hadn't gotten up with him in just been like three or four days. We're talking about, I'm just telling you, we gotta watch it because we get criticized that I keep going, trying to talk to this person and I can't ever get up. I mean, and we can't justify, I mean, even when we call sometime, we can't get up with people, you know?
I've heard the same thing.
But if it's of a speci- specific situation, we could address that, but just on the whole, just not knowing what the situation is.
Yeah, but it is happening though. I mean, it's, it's happening now.
Uh, well, that and I, and I'm not picking on anybody, but honestly, that's the number one complaint I hear from DSS that I call down there and I can't get somebody. And some of that is also, well, I call something down there and I want to speak to my caseworker right now. Well, my casework, that caseworker is married, you know, or is out of the office or whatever. So, um, if there are specific complaints, let us know what they are. And it may be, yeah, it takes time to get back to somebody. And it, you know, well, I know I'm hard to get in touch with.
Well, I've, I've had, and you'll notice since the instance I've called. Well, I've had, and you'll notice since the instance I've called and one day somebody needed to get somewhere and I couldn't get Kevin, and I know why, because he was out with somebody on something else. But I went through the switchboard and I went through every option. I just wanted somebody to ask for home and I never got anybody picking home.
Well, I personally don't care for the 60, 40. I think if you work for the county, you ought to come to work every day. Everybody else got to come to work every day. That's what we made these offices for. We're building, put people in. Well. Buildings that are empty.
When I originally typed this up, I wanted to leave an option in there, and that's why I left five days in there. And then of course, we changed a little bit to 60%. But that's, that's why it's up to you.
You know, through COVID, I could understand it through COVID. I mean.
Yeah, well, and that, that falls under the state of emergency.
That's right. That's right. But I'm just saying, I could understand it then. But, you know, still goes back to everybody else got to get up in the morning and get dressed and go to work and, you know, and when you do that, you got more of your head on your shoulders when you do that. Instead of sitting around housing in pajamas, which be propped up. You know, that's, you know, that happens. You know, you know, watch TV a little bit, eat you something. I mean, you know, that happens.
We know that work from home is a new, normal.
It is for the.
We just don't know. We're trying to perfect it. But we know now that if it's done right, it works well for both employer and employee some positions. And there are people that need leave time by being able to work at home, or have a special needs child for period of time, or someone in the home that they're responsible for. This can work to our advantage. They can still do their work and without some other, you know, some, some time.
I could understand social conditions.
Yeah. We need it. We just have to fine tune it.
Well, and what you're talking about, a child or a parent to take care of.
That's just one.
But that's addressed in there that they have to have arrangements for that, and they have to show their supervisor that they have arrangements for that to be taken. So they're not.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
I mean, I know it.
There's a lot of component parts to this and it's.
And that's why it's nine pages long.
Yeah, and we know it's gonna be good. We just don't know how to do it right now.
I would just offer for Commissioner Frisell, is that since COVID, all of our training has been virtual. I've gone through, I've PMA training, equity training, just all the different kinds of trainings. In fact, it helped us to get training during that time because it was virtual. But then I'd say 99% of that training, it's really stressed that if we had remote work during COVID, and now we're fighting to get applicants at this point. The workforce has changed. It has changed exponentially. And in order to recruit, sometimes you need to have available remote work. And they're just saying, it's hard to say, well, we could do it with COVID, and now we can. And they always stress flexibility is the key, and that is a huge recruitment and retention tool. So I'll just offer that for consideration.
And one, I may, one, the one thing that impressed me was April's comment about when they went to the work from home, they, they had to do it because of space needs. But those people who are allowed to work from home have an expectation to be 15% more productive than the ones who are within the offices.
You actually have less distractions working from home.
Sometimes.
As long as you take care, as long as you take care of childcare or dependents.
Unless you have a cat that wants to jump on a keyboard or anything.
Well, I guess.
And I've had experience with it.
And I understand completely that things are changing. I mean, and we don't want to be left behind. I, I just wonder, even when I talk to friends of mine who live in other states, and they're making $80,000 and they work from home in their pajamas on the couch. How do you fairly, from an HR perspective, monitor that, that work? I mean, because the person in the office, I'm watching them, they gotta be on it. How do you monitor from an HR perspective to ensure that that work is being done?
The work, just from the ones that I know that do partial remote work, they're turning out the work. You can send them an email requesting something, and before two hours later, we have the end result. So I have had no issues with asking someone or getting a reply for someone, email, telephone, we do Zoom, Google meets all the time, and it's been effective. Every bit of the training in this MUNIS training has been virtual. The lady training us is in upstate New York, and all of us is, is like six people are on the Zoom call, and we have implemented an entire HR payroll software system through virtual training. So everyone I've seen, the work gets turned out.
Well, guys, I tell you something. I work with a lot of people. I got a lot of people that works for me. And when they're in front of me, they're working hard. But when they go behind the building, they don't get nothing done. Now, y'all can take that for what it's worth. I've been in business a long time, and I've worked with a lot of people for years, and I ain't seen just a handful that didn't do that.
Man, I respect you.
Now, she says, if she, if she emails somebody, tells them she needs something, she just said it's a couple hours. Why not now? Why not in 10 minutes?
Sometimes it takes that long. Just you're looking.
But you said a couple hours though.
Develop, I'm just saying it gets done quickly.
Let me just say this. Working from home, for those that can, it's a big benefit for them, and what's been proven that is people save gas, they saving clothing, and a lot of other things, of course. The energy bill is up in their house, but I know people because I'm in contact with folk that do this all the time, that work from home. And the ladies are saving a lot of money in their hairdos and their clothing and their gas, because they've gotten an increase by virtual.
We just give my name first. But most of them want.
And so it's, it's working in some areas, in some jobs that work very well. And there again, that's the new norm, because I can tell you this. We're gonna have to do some of this to maintain our employees going forward, because there's a big shortage. And it's not that our people have gotten lazy, they just not folk to replace them.
Well, we don't, we don't have a retention issue.
No, no, we don't, but I appreciate that. I appreciate what you're saying. My concern is that we're fair with how we do it.
Yeah.
Nobody's putting demands that either, no, no, I mean, I don't have, I want people working from home. I get it. I love to work from home, but be fair about how you administer. One department can, but this department can't. But then we'll say that all employees are important to us. That's, that's, that's my problem. You know, and someone make demands of you, either I have to work at home or I quit. That's not good. No, you know what I'm saying? I'm not saying so anyone did, but if they did, that's still not a good response. You're trying to be fair to DSS. You're trying to be fair to, to, I guess, the health department. You're trying to be fair to Susan's department and Brian's department and Rob's department. We need to be fair with how we do it. You know, you can't just let one person work 12 months from home and other departments say, well, I got folks that want to go home too, but tell them to come to work.
Well, to me, I do kind of disagree with that. I just think there's some job, two things. I think there's some jobs that lend itself to be able to work from home. There's some jobs that they can't work at home at all, because they need to be on the job. They don't have to.
And I, and I agree with you on that.
But I also think, I think there's, and it discussed at the most point, I think there's people who don't have the self-discipline to work from home.
Well, and there's a paragraph in here about that, and, 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 you know, a new employee can't start out working at home. They have to have a minimum of one year eligible to be considered for telework. And then their proficiency measures, even with the ones that's been here 20 years, their proficiencies have to be a certain, I think it's like a need except meets, except limitations or whatever, before they can continue that. And then if they're taken off of it, it's another year before they can be reconsidered for that. So there's some protections in there about efficiency wise and who can, you know, I can't hire you today and, and say, Duke, you must start working at home. It's a year before you ever get considered.
Yep, but you know, it just ain't fair for, it just ain't fair for Duke to work at home and BJ not to work at home.
Right, right. That's, I don't see, I don't see where that's fair to, to BJ. I'm sorry, I just.
No.
There's some jobs that we came here from home. Samantha came in, she can't have people working.
I get that.
I want to hear as a full virtual.
Well, don't even talk about that. That's a different topic. Yeah, but the ones that are doing that are, well, we could get into all that. They're contracting out some of that, so don't, don't, I wouldn't wish for that. But anyway. You know, drive-throughs at McDonald's are contracted out remotely. You know, you go to McDonald's, drive-through here, you may be talking to a guy in Texas to place that order. And then we get to the window.
So I guess, you know, what, in a perfect world, I guess, trusting department heads to manage their people would be the ideal solution in a perfect world, but I guess do we trust our department heads to do it fairly? I guess that's the question. And are we gonna put them all up on the same umbrella?
If, 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 if there wasn't a problem, we wouldn't be getting the process.
So how do we resolve and be fair with doing?
Well, we're speakers, all-knowing, all-knowing.
I already know.
Well, I mean, it just sounds to me like we're stuck on that paragraph H of 60% compared to some other number, and I don't know what that number is.
Susan, what's your, what's your take? It might be important. What's your take?
I say at least do the 60%, but I don't have a vote.
This, I'm not driving this ship no more. I driven it, I drove it with my nine pages of typing. I ain't driving no more.
I will say, I do get complaints of, hey, I've been trying to get in touch with X. And honestly, I get those complaints about people who are in the office that are there, they're in the office, they're working. I can lay eyes on them on a day-to-day basis. I get complaints about them more often than I get complaints about the ones who are teleworking. First of all, the ones who are teleworking is a much smaller group, and like I said, you know, the ladies out front that y'all see every time you come in here, they cannot work from home. Actually, in this building, I've got two employees that do remote work, my IT director and my risk manager.
And I've been here four years and I've never met the IT lady. I know she's got an office here.
And I'm the risk manager. I don't know.
She, she's in there sometimes. She just keeps her door. And once the officers keep that office here for, well, that goes to your bank. Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at. We're building offices, we're putting power on, putting lights on, and nobody showing up to work.
Well, we had her in a dog kennel across the street for years. And because we were moved around here, and when the reentry council moved back out to DSS, we freed up space, so she just moved into this building. Or no, no, Works, to the Works Council. She just moved into this space within the last year.
To Nada and Stephanie.
Oh.
Well, this, well, I mean, I don't want to sit here and believe that either, either we need to make a decision on this or we need to decide to wait another week or two or whatever during next meeting.
It, I guess.
So what are we gonna vote on? The 60, 40, or whatever you decide to make the motion for?
We need to unify on this thing.
We need to be unified on this.
Well, I think we should do the 60 or 40, and going back to this trust factor. I trust the people that we hired to do the job, because I don't know how to do it. I can't do it. I can't give them the advice. They are the professionals.
Or if there's something in between, whatever.
And I can tell you, the people that complain, you will always get, if you had Jesus and the twelve disciples doing it, you're gonna get the same.
The Jewish.
He spoke a par.
And so I would just recommend we go with this, and we need to come back and we meet every month, we can tighten up as we go, but we can't sell it today. Because I do know when people are at home in social services doing case studies, there are times when the most advantageous thing to do is allow a person to work from home. They've been out the day in. The study's gotta be in tomorrow. It's a blessing that person be willing to work from home and do the work that night and turn it in the next morning. That's what the officials come in. You can tell what it works. So it worked perfect in some situation, and then sometime it won't work, but let's take them here to roll on. That's my motion that we go with 60, 40.
60, 40. But now you, and I don't want to speak for your motion, but we need to make an entire from A through F here.
Yes.
You just, you need to motion accept the policy.
Just to accept the policy.
Accept the policy.
What, what is submitted today without any revision.
That's right.
I will accept that motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, you got that.
Let's see, five one?
Yeah.
They're right. Now, is that for all policies or just for that one?
That was all of them. That was everything under A through F.
Okay, thank you. That's my question.
Let's take about five minutes. Everybody, I'm getting blown up by somebody here that I need to call. Just take a quick, quick five-minute break. We'll be right back.
Listen. Hey, look, I got the same thing. Look right here. I'm telling you. You're a support partner there?
Yeah.
Let's see here.
Let's see, we got, we got. Okay, now that's going to be cold, cold. You want fries? Look, how are you?
Good.
I have been.
You know, so.
I got people I'm talking to.
Different there than here, but you know, people charge ten dollars to get into this facility. But if you can look, you know, there's multiple water slides, that's all day, you know, fun activity for children.
Well, Mr. Brown, I wanna go for the, the big one. I have children myself who need something more. I like the splash pad, we need more. And my grandma told me if you want the rain, you gotta carry an umbrella. Sun may be shining, carry an umbrella. I walk by faith, I'm trusting we're gonna get some money from the state. I still think those big machines.
And, and the reason why we request, requested one point two five, because we, we considered, you know, adding some shelters and
Oh, yeah.
potential bigger rental opportunities around that.
Right, with that one, with that million dollars facility, did that include picnic area?
It doesn't, it just, it just includes the, the water facility itself. And keep in mind, you know, right now, the, uh, the, the pump house is stored in, inside of the building that's on site right now. Obviously, if you do this million dollar project, we have to expand on that too. So that's why we considered, you know, another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because we're gonna have to expand the footprint and, um, you know, add some features around.
Well, does that include tearing down what's there now, or?
Yeah, so, so we considered demo in-house, um, because again, you know, we're basically removing the concrete structure outside. The company Vortex said they would demo inside, you know, the pump house and, and, and those, you know, intricate areas. Um, but, you know, we, we're, we're confident that, you know, we can get Mike McGirt and, uh, Brian Higgins to tear up some concrete and, and remove what's on site. You know, we would be responsible for demo outside, which is pretty straightforward, because none of that stuff is gonna be reused.
County commissioner can volunteer some time to help too.
Especially though, here.
Truck.
Even with the application for the smaller, if Brian puts in an application for this, uh, for a four hundred thousand dollar project, but then we get a million dollars from the state, we can shit, we can upscale.
Yeah.
That won't be a problem as long as we spend at least four hundred thousand dollars.
Is that project just from one company, or that, that do you project up any other?
Um, that, that is from one company, that's from the company that installed. You know, there, there's not a ton of, of, uh, splash pad companies out there, I wanna say there's two. One's Rain Deck, one's Vortex. I haven't had any experience with Vortex, but they're, they're competitors, you know, they're, they're right around the, the same. Um, I mean, Vortex has been around a lot longer, I think they're more reputable. Um, so, you know, that's why we reached out directly to, to them.
Let me ask this question. I don't know what we've asked from, uh, Garland Pierce. We tried to get it from Raleigh, but have we put together a comprehensive study, a plan for the entire county? Because we, we've already got two requests, this is another request, and all of it had to do with recreation. Should we not put it all together? The request that was made this morning, do we have this request?
We kinda have.
We have.
Well, with what we submitted to the state earlier,
This was separate.
In, in, well, we, a million dollars of it was a splash pad, right?
Okay, so we have that.
Yeah.
Okay, good, I just wanted to know, okay. Because this is something that we really need to do, because our recreation facilities, it's pulling and getting out here to Dragon Park, we're at zero.
I agree with you, Mr. Tom.
We're at zero, so we, we, we can't go nowhere but down from where we are, so we have to really give it a facelift.
All right, so let's be clear before we start making motions and stuff here, as to what Brian is gonna go for, what we're, I know we're asking the state for a million dollars, but then what we're gonna commit to that. Um, I think we need to be specific in that, if we're, if you're ready to do that, I just.
Well, I'll let you know for the sake of timeline, um, this grant proposal is due on May the first, and it's awarded around September.
It's gonna be in our next budget year.
Right.
Either way. Um, but I, I'll let you guys make that decision, I'll hang on to word that. I mean, I guess we had, need to have a contingency in there, what if we don't get the money from the state? Do we go back from square one?
Do we make it a couple year plan, or, you know, put it as a short term goal?
Now, that, that one, that one little thing there is a million dollars.
No, this is about four hundred thousand.
That's four hundred thousand, okay.
The other, can you put that couple million dollars?
Part, party funds have to be, uh, spent within a three year time.
That's a million dollars right there.
Say that one more time.
Parks and Recreation Trust Funds have to be spent within three years.
So we could do the big one, and our commitment of five hundred thousand or so could be over three year period.
Or, or we get the money from the state.
And then we match it.
And we don't have any.
Then we're gonna do it. We have to use that, that. We won't have to really match it.
I don't know about the state.
Brian, I heard you say something about that. With a million dollars with a ten dollar fee, you get it, that won't work for us.
No, I think you, you pay ten dollars.
Now, is that, that million dollars, is that buying it and constructing it? That's buying it.
Yeah, they basically said this was a million dollar project in a minute.
Right.
From their perspective, from Vortex, from the company's installation and, and brother.
Just if you know, well, how, how big is that gonna be? It looks big, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure footprint wise, what that spans across.
It's bigger than what's there now.
Oh, yeah, obviously, it's, it's a lot bigger.
I swear, I don't see no million dollars there.
You know how they do construction.
Yeah, I don't see a million dollars there, I see, I, I, I mean, I've seen a lot of houses, I don't see a million dollars.
Well, you talk to.
Yeah, but I'm looking at that, I'm looking at that, but it ain't that expensive. I think you already get brought somewhere else, but I, I just don't see a million dollars there.
Well, and with that, uh, the request now is to apply for the grant, and if we're awarded the grant before we actually do it, we will have to bid it out.
Okay. But could, could, could our maintenance department do a lot of that work? If we did do it?
Probably not.
No.
I'd have a licensed plumber, I would have a licensed plumber, I would've been installed plumbing and, and then electrical as well. And did they bring in their own people to do that?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, so going back to Bishop Gibson's request of the big one million dollars, do we need want him to request a five hundred thousand dollar part or a two twenty-five part? Knowing that we're gonna have to match that, right?
Right, and, and, and from, um, you know, the, the individuals up in Raleigh that, that sit on the party's board, you're, you're less likely obviously to get a half a million than you are two twenty-five.
I'm not saying what it costs, uh, for just, for just the material, because you know, you got construction companies right here in the county that could, and plumbers, and electricians, and that, that could construct it, we're gonna use county money, we can use.
You wanna sell it, you wanna use it?
Yeah, you need to use the big ones to actually pay the taxes.
Like, unless it's, unless it's statute that you had to put it out.
Well, I mean, we, but, but for the purpose of what he's wanting, he just wants to do, do the grant and we'll commit to two twenty-five.
Oh, yeah, I know what he's talking about, I'm just, I'm just battling over there.
Oh.
Two things, if, 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 if he goes for the five hundred thousand dollar grant and gets it, then we're on the hook for five hundred thousand, which I think is fine.
Yeah.
But what bothers me more is him, the possibility, there being a less likelihood that he's gonna get the five hundred thousand dollar grant than he is to get the two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Is that what I heard you just say?
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously, um, th- their awards are based off of the pot of money that legislature puts in place for the trust fund. Over the past two years, they've had an abundance of funds, you know, e- everybody's been getting big grants, they've been handing out left and right. They're not exactly sure how much money's gonna be in the pot this year.
Would that work in our favor, knowing that we haven't been reaching the pot, taking lumps on down?
We're definitely in a favorable position, you know, being in a tier one county, we haven't applied for funds, um, since the Morgan complex was initially built. Um, so, you know, fifteen years, we haven't applied, so, you know, we're in a position.
So is your gut feeling, if we can commit to five, to go for the five?
I'm always down, I'm, I'm always ready to.
There's no way to say, we want five, but it takes two fifty if you give it.
Well, I think if you can, I got.
Five, you go for the five.
Yeah, but you have to know what, Brian, just, just make it clear to them that, that is, is favorable from the commissioner, that they would support. You know, going for five, and we'll match it.
Can you ask for a million?
Five hundred.
So I wanna also.
Let's shoot four, shoot for four.
Go right ahead.
That's we, um, go with the five hundred thousand dollar P A R T M grant. Um.
And commit.
And we commit.
You have, once you receive the grant, we have, what, two years, three years?
Three years.
Three years.
So we, we.
You got a second to that, Jason? I didn't, I didn't hear it from first.
I made a motion.
I second it. For how much?
Five hundred, five hundred dollars.
Duke made this, Duke seconded.
Oh, you seconded?
Yeah, I seconded.
Okay. All right, any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? All right.
Let's go get one.
Thank you, sir. I, I got one more quick thing, one more quick thing before we go.
We should've heard this before.
This is pretty small, it's pretty simple.
At our Parks and Rec meeting, Brian does a good job of illustrating what, what Parks and Rec Department is doing. You know, he, he very seldom get, get told that, but I think he's doing a real good job of illustrating where we're headed as a board and as a county.
Yeah, so, um, I, I, I know you guys have heard about our community build project, our potential community build project out at Scotland Yard, Dragon Park. Uh, we've been talking about this at our advisory board meeting for the past several months. I came to this board around this time last year and requested funding for a community build, which, uh, if I'm not mistaken, you guys earmarked around three hundred thousand dollars, uh, from ARP funds for this project. Um, and, and that was our initial, um, that was our initial projection for the project. Um, but, you know, we, 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 we did get three quotes, um, from three different companies. Um, the quote came in a little higher. Um, obviously, I, I like to say playground companies are kinda like insurance companies, when the calendar flips, their rates go up for whatever reason it is. But, uh, there's multiple pictures here, uh, the rate did come in a little higher, because we added surfacing, uh, on this playground. You know, we're, 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 can you go to a different picture to show the, the bigger image? So what we're planning on constructing is an, an ADA fully inclusive playground feature. And, and what that means is, someone that's wheelchair bound can play on the same surface that other, other children can. You know, right now at Dragon Park, there's a lot of steps, um, there's all mulch out there, that if, if I'm bound to a wheelchair, it's hard for me, or it's hard for my caregiver to push me across, and it's almost impossible for me right now, if I have a child with disabilities to play out at Dragon Park. Well, this feature is fully inclusive, um, this surfacing right here is similar to what I have in my hand. It's almost like a track at a high school, you know, so someone that's wheelchair bound or has a disability, um, you know, they, they can roll across that. Now, this lighter color surface is mulch, which is a false surface. Um, but this plan is the plan that the advisory board highly suggested. Um, it, the, the, the company that we work with did an exceptional job. If you can see right here, this is kind of their dragon feature, you know, because a lot of people see it as Dragon Park. I mentioned, a lot of people play with the, uh, musical instruments out there, did an excellent job incorporating that. Obviously, you know, your ADA accessibility pictures, go back to that smaller picture, uh, of the, the smaller playground. They, uh, they did their own research, you know, th- this is a John Blue House, you know, they, they incorporated local features uh, here in Scotland County. I wanna say this is a train from the Train Depot, so obviously, that's the smaller kids' play area. The, uh, the larger feature is, is, you know, four, five through twelve. This, um, particular design came in at four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Now, the Parks and Recreation Foundation has about a hundred thousand dollars that's accessible for this project, and you guys have allocated initially three hundred thousand, so I'm coming back to you to request eighty thousand dollars. Uh, sorry, it came in after you just, you just, um, approved potentially five hundred thousand. But I will say this, we have a subcommittee on our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board that's, that's hitting home runs right now. Um, Francis Willis, Jeannie Pope, Myra Stone, Elizabeth Hernandez, Mr. Jeff Maylie in our department. They've taken it upon themselves to do some potential fundraising, they've already reached out to the Morgan Foundation, so, you know, I'll, I'll say that I'm confident that we can get some additional funding from our subcommittee, but I would like to, to know that we could go ahead and get that additional eighty thousand dollars. If you guys have ever been to Special Olympics, there's hundreds of kids here in Scotland County that deserve something like this.
I would think that. People that you're gonna ask for money will come with less than the eighty, it won't, you need that on top of the ages, they, they'll work up with the more they'll get.
So I, we, we have a, a deficit of about eighty thousand dollars right now.
And why do we need that?
Their surfacing.
Yeah, why do we need that?
Handicap.
Um.
Just for the wheelchairs.
Wheelchair accessibility. Yeah.
And we need that.
How, how much did that is, what is that?
That's about it, the gap.
That's about it, that's about what that cost.
But out of three hundred, correct, if I'm wrong, we allocated from ARP, right?
Correct.
Yes, so, and there's money left, there's another ARP update coming here, but, um, we could increase that ARP funding to three eighty.
I will, I will move if we do that.
In a sec.
Oh, you got it.
All right, so we have a motion in a second.
What are we second, what are we motion?
Making a motion, increase it from three hundred of ARP money to three hundred and eighty thousand.
We've already gave them three hundred, we just moved it up to three eighty.
Yeah, just moving it to three eighty, and we have a second on that, any more discussion on it? None? All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
I got a question, I got a question, could you just say? So, so we're doing all this stuff in the parks, because help me understand here, because I'm, I'm a little bit fuzzy on this. So, what about the Parks and Waverham and Gibson, what are we doing with these parks?
Yeah, so Gibson's getting about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar upgrade right now, and they're getting a new restroom, a facility shelter, uh, and a, a, a piece of playground equipment. We just resurfaced the basketball court in Gibson last fiscal year, and did an Eagle Scout project there as well.
Okay.
Um.
And what about, what about Waverham?
In Waverham, their town clerk, just, we just met a couple weeks ago on site, um, to see what we can do in the next fiscal year, because that's, that's the last year of our five year plan.
Right.
We've been getting around forty thousand dollars allocated in tax dollars, and I've been working hard to, you know, to try to match those funds, um, to kinda stretch them out a little bit. But he did just submit a list of potential improvements that the town of Waverham would like to see out at Murray Park. So we're just kinda working back and forth now to, you know, potentially see what we can do maybe next fiscal year.
Okay.
Um, but.
Gibson, I knew you said bathroom, are they planning on putting an area like they have?
Just like Hammond Park.
You gotcha.
So when's the last time anything been done at Murray?
Out at Murray Park, we just updated the lighting last fiscal year, uh, around the Walfy Trail, because it's, it's black out there. Uh, I'm not sure.
Probably before Brian.
Yeah, a long time before me.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to, I think we need to look at doing something in Waverham. Uh, you know, there's a lot of people living in Waverham, there's a lot of kids running the streets in Waverham, and there's nothing in Waverham, absolutely nothing. And it's a lot of law, law and birth Waverham.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm working with Mr. Henigan, um, you know, to.
Well, I'm just saying, we're spending all this money right here, you're asking for money here, and you're asking for money there, but you're not asking for nothing for Waverham. That just don't seem quite right.
We make that part of our focus, yeah, I think.
Yeah, I like when you make it, make it, you know.
Yeah, in, in the upgrading of the goals.
Yeah, yeah, I like, I like when you look at that a little closer at Waverham.
And, and that is part of their.
Yeah.
Their master plan, their, they have a master park plan, so it is in rotation to be looked at.
Okay, well, I know they've been looked at a long time, you know, for a long time, the grass wasn't moved, for a long time.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I don't even think, is there, is there any basketball courts up there anymore?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, that, that.
When'd they get put back there? Because there wasn't.
They've been, I, I know we go through there.
There wasn't there a long time.
They probably, the goals probably need to be up there.
Yeah. I think y'all need to look at Waverham.
Right, well, yeah, I mean, we, yeah, they, they reached out to me, and we met on site, so we're gonna start working on some plans to, to do some upgrades in that park.
I, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Let me just say one word, I heard what you just said, and I wanna make sure I say this. I think what Commissioner Brazil is saying, because I hear it a lot, it, we pour all of our resources out at Dragon Park, and we kinda forget about Market Park, Mark, Waverham Park. And I understand they reached out to you, but what our citizens say to us is, we have an obligation to make sure that they're on our minds as well. And that's what I think.
Right, well, we, we catch, we catch a lot of, especially in Waverham, that, that if it ain't law and birth, it don't count.
Yeah.
And that's what we hear out of Waverham a lot, especially from the park. And that's the reason I'd like to see a, a little something done in the park, or, I mean, that needs, that needs to be on our focus too, that if we're doing these other parks, that needs to be on our focus too, this way. Thank you, because like I said, we got a lot of citizens there.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, move on to our ARP fund update. You'll need that as well. Here we go.
All right. Okay. And I think I sent out a copy of this, uh, or gave access of this spreadsheet to everyone, uh.
This is the ARP update, okay? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
With this, just to, uh, clarify where we are, uh, just gone through, just as we were going through building up the allocations, we had the programs, um, titles on the left, the original requests, uh, and of course, if there were any mo- if there was any additional modifications, some of those were, uh, if it, the board funded it, the board adjusted it, or there was some was like church community services, they got a second allocation. Uh, so with that, um, right now.
Can you go back up?
Yeah.
Go back up, we're just trying to look, we're just trying to go line by line.
Now, it correct, and I know we haven't, we haven't distributed a lot of this, like Partners in Ministry, and because we put that contingency to plug in breaking ground, right?
Um, yes.
On, on that.
That has, we have get not done, uh, we've not funded Partners in Ministry, uh, DSS, the slot program, that's been funded, it's not fully spent yet.
Yeah, that's correct.
Um, medical supplies is fully expended, uh, church community services, the first allocation is, the second allocation will come out kind of early, so not all of that's there. Church community services has been fully expended, or at least has been fully transferred to them. Uh, the EMS Waverham sites fully done, uh, sheriff's pay, uh, we do that on an annual allocation. The incentive program, that's complete, uh, Partners in Ministries.
But, but let's talk about that, what happens here if, and I don't know where there are, are in their fundraising or whatever, but I know their original three million dollar bill is probably six million dollars now, but what happens if they don't do that and we have it?
A deadline.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
That's, that's gonna be the request I'm about to make.
Okay, okay.
Uh, in here, of like Partners in Ministry has not received a dime from us. Uh, broadband, uh, we will likely make that payment, will actually be, I had a conference call with DI- D I T, uh, Division of Information Technology, that's the state IT, uh, so Spectrum has gotten their grant, um, and that twenty-five thousand dollars goes to that.
But we allocated five hundred, but we only gave them twenty-five.
I got you on that, but my next question would be, Kevin, we don't use those funds that particular line item, have we distributed it somewhere else?
Yes.
Is it, is it indicated?
Well, that's what he said, he needs to talk to the staff.
Right, uh, so right now, like the, uh, we have these different programs. Hold on, that North Turnpike was, should've been set, still maintained at seven fifty, uh, but with that one, we did not get that state grant. So, right now, the board has allocated just under five point five million dollars. We have six point seven million, so there's about one point two million that has been allocated. Uh, the recommendation that I'm going to make to the board is that basically, as of June thirty, all unspent funds, not out, not unallocated, I'm talking any funds that are not under contract and spent, would basically be reallocated by the board to be as revenue replacement to offset public safety salaries.
Is our people gonna be okay with that?
The state actually recommends that strategy.
I got you, but if we do that, can we amend it? If we, if we allocate those funds to public safety, whether it be EMS, sheriff's department, that money is designated for that only, can we go back in and move it?
Well, at that point in time, we report to the federal government that we have spent all six point seven million dollars.
Got you.
The federal government would then be satisfied, because that is a recovery funds allowable expenditure.
I got you, so there won't be any audit?
So there will not be any audit issues, the state is recommending this process. At that point in time, that one point two million dollars that's unallocated just goes into ultimately fund balance, and then the board can just designate that one point two million, or put it in a separate fund so it's tracked.
But keep in mind that something that we've committed to, that we have not spent money on, we may still be on the hook for that.
Yeah.
Partners in Ministry, for example.
Right.
Um.
So those funds.
We might, we might should've, we might should've put dates on these when we. Um, but, uh, go, go back up some, Kevin, I just, I'm trying to look at the, the unspent proportion of these. I'm just wondering, you know, maybe we should, like broadband, I know we said five hundred thousand, but we only, we gave what, Spectrum twenty-five thousand?
Right.
Yeah, so there's gonna be a half million dollars left there, um, or it's seventy-five thousand dollars left there.
Well, that's why we reduce that four seventy-five, so that's no longer in the allocated.
Okay, okay, so that's why it's one point two million.
Yeah, what about the Viper radios for the sheriff's department, we already taken care of that.
That's being taken care of, because we got a state allocation for those.
I got you.
Okay, okay, cool.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be about done then.
Uh, we're starting to see invoices come in.
Are you?
Yeah. Are, are they in yet, are they?
We have, we have radios in, uh, we're still waiting on some of these infra, some of the items that will go on the towers.
Got you.
We have submitted the applications to donate that inform, to donate that to the state. So the state is in process of accepting, they have to do the paperwork to accept it, because it has to be state property before it can be put on the tower. Uh, so they'll put it on the tower, at that point in time, they maintain it forever. Uh, so we're still on, we are still on track, uh, for that to happen.
Um. Bottom line here is, we got a million two left, that if we don't spend it, we gotta reallocate it. Yeah, well, you can't, well, some of that's already in the proportions.
Additional that Brian wanted to do, but that eighty-nine.
We just added.
Okay, just add.
What about, let's try to review, if you're okay.
Can we use this, use some of this for?
Uh.
Wow, well, I think.
And what you say, we got to do this too.
I, I have some questions that I wanna talk to Ed about that project.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we need to get the legal review this, that does, because that.
I thought you said they could, if, if she operate loans and nonprofits.
Well, that's.
There, there's, I have, I have questions.
Yeah, that, that. Yeah, that's, that's four thirty two, whatever that law is just passed that we gotta watch. Because it holds each one of us individually criminally responsible if we if we give money to the wrong, without the right trail.
Kevin, what's the deadline for spending this money? Is it December?
December.
It is December of, having all funds encumbered by December of this year, all funds spent by December of twenty four.
But what you were saying, that that really was just, but I guess we talked about that later.
Yeah.
Because that thing was, none of us own that pool.
No, but but if it, even if we give to a nonprofit or whatever, we have to be able to be careful to show. It almost has to be like a contract, like what we did with the the medical clinic. Instead of just here, here's a hundred fifty thousand dollars, we had to say, all right, so we're gonna give you a hundred dollars, and I don't know what number it is, a hundred dollars per patient, up to a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So we had to be able to show an actual benefit to the county, to each, to the county citizens and how it's gonna benefit them, without just giving them a bulk of money and saying, welcome, go play ball. So it has to, i- if it's not a county entity, we just have to be really careful as to how we do this now. Just whether we're on the board or not, whether we're on the board or not has a lot to do with whether.
Is that any difference, let's say, for instance, tis the season coming?
Not at all. No difference in that either. We would have to be able to say, here's what tis the season is gonna provide the county, and here's what is gonna benefit the county, and be able to show, am I right?
Well, tis the season's got an extra layer on it, and if you got separation church and state, you gotta be careful about that.
But with that, when we give the church community services, we have, it's in our, we came up, we developed a contract, and here's the scope of services that we're funding. And it was for homeless prevention, because that was specifically allowed by state and by federal law for the county to have projects on.
We can't now just turn around and give somebody X amount of dollars and say, have it added, even though they might have the greatest attention. Scope or contract within as to what they, what they're gonna do with.
When you plan to get with, get with the chair on that, as far as with Ms. Ryan proposal?
With just hearing it today, I'll sit down and go back over it and come up with my conversations and just have those with Ed. But I'll have those, I'll have that before the March regular meeting.
All right, so we'll move on to the next item unless somebody's got anything else about art.
Well, and we've, we've. You've got the charge rec, that's the three hundred thousand, that's the three hundred thousand for the.
Drive, drive.
It would now be three hundred and eighty.
Now it's three hundred and eighty. The the five hundred thousand that we're, that we basically are have agreed to be on the hook for, if he applies for and gets the larger grant to do the million dollar splash part. Can that be added to this?
It can be.
It's gonna take a big hook to what's left.
Well, and I don't necessarily want to do that, but I think we get to the short run, that may be something.
I think it'd be an option anyway.
Yeah. And like I said, and we'll come up with a plan and bring it with a budget amendment to the board for action. But like I said, the goal is to to fully expend all these art funds on paper, this fiscal year. So that we come, that so that all the auditing and reporting requirements are complete. Now, which means our free up some unrestricted fund balance. Or we would create additional fund balance that could be used in the future for these projects. And then we can continue to track this amount that we create. So that we know that we track the six point seven million dollars of assets.
So it doesn't. If we if we have an amount allocated to something, and it just just picks something up there, and and it, for whatever reason, the organization doesn't get to the point that they, if they're gonna build a six million dollar building and they don't, and so they're not, but they're not gonna build it, are we still on the hook for the three hundred thousand? And if they decide, well, we're not gonna build the building, we're not gonna use your money, and your your dates have passed, what what happens to that?
The designation set by the board goes away.
But then the money's left. Yeah, then it comes up.
Okay, but that has to be done before, does that have to be done before December of twenty three?
Like partners and ministry, that three hundred thousand that was set there. That was, the contingency was that they had to break ground before they received any funds.
But we didn't put a date on the break ground.
But at that point in time, ARF already had a limit in December thirty first, two thousand and twenty three.
That's 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 what I'm asking.
So I would assume.
Do we need to make, do we need to let them know that?
That would probably be wise to let them know that if they, if they're not planning on.
Write a letter and say, you know, we know we gave this much, and we stand by that, but if we haven't broken ground by whatever date, that has to go away.
And us taking it, we lose it, that's the date.
Right.
But we, but rather than losing it, we need to reallocate it.
I agree.
I just, I think it'd be fair to them to let them know that.
And and I'm not, I see family promises, have they gotten their seventy five thousand yet?
No.
Okay.
So what's they've gotten?
They've gotten a partial.
I think all of them should be.
Be honest with you. How much did the family promises get? You say it got a.
I think it was like ten or fifteen, it was not.
We allocated seventy five, I think you look it up.
Historic properties already got there. I know they're spending money. What's this, what's this North Turnpike? What is that?
That is the water extension project that we were looking, that we applied a grant on.
That we didn't get.
That we did not get.
I was saying, we didn't get the grant. Okay, it it, I hate that, but that's not looking up, right?
Yeah, so it looks to me like we've got some money on there that we're gonna, that we may have.
You don't, you don't have a choice almost, like you say, it's a loser. A loser.
Move or lose it. It's better to lose it.
But let's, but let's be, and we're trying to be smart how we've spent money, but sometimes it's been more of a shotgun effect than than a.
Yeah.
Well, on that one.
And when we go off and report the use of all these funds as public safety expenditures, at that point in time, the December, the end of the calendar year limit goes away. Some of the restrictions go away, though we still under state law on what can be expended. And basically, if there's a project that you want to do four years from now, that we know we want to put a quarter of a million dollars, or you want to put a quarter of a million dollars to, it will give you the flexibility to do that.
Let me ask this question. I'm detained of the night, couldn't make the running schedule meeting. If you would, what do we, and how much do we allocate for refurbishing our library?
We did.
Getting good.
We haven't, we haven't, that's in the discussion for later.
Later, okay.
And we will actually be, after, probably after lunch, we will actually, on the tour, we will be going by the library.
All right, so we'll move on here to the financial update, Ben.
All right, I'm in your packet, so you had some detailed information as as of where we are with the general fund as of January thirty first. We had an original appropriation of fifty point six million. We've brought in transfers or adjustments of three point nine million for a revised budget of fifty four point six million. We've actually spent thirty, I'm sorry, we've actually received thirty two point two million. And we're still looking to collect twenty two point four million, so we have brought in about fifty nine percent of what we have budgeted at this point. I've kind of broke down at the bottom on the fund balance appropriation, because that was a large number in the adjustments. And the the biggest piece of that was for the Johnson rehabilitation that was actually allocated in fiscal year twenty two. But it did not get placed where it needed to, so I've listed that here, just so that is in our fund balance allocation. On the expense side, we have expended twenty nine point seven million of the revised fifty four point six million dollar budget. We have available left to spend, to spend seventeen point three million. And we've overall spent about sixty eight percent of what we've had budgeted as of January thirty first. Any questions on that before I move on? Okay. Just to kind of give an idea of where I think fund balance is gonna fall. At twenty two, fiscal year twenty two, we had estimated about twenty one point sixty eight percent of unassigned fund balance. Looking at the same projection for twenty three, with the fund balance that we have allocated up to this point. I'm expecting that to fall to about fifteen point seven three percent. There again, with what Kevin has discussed with the ARPA funds, some of that will increase our fund balance if we decide to move those dollars around, so this number could actually go up.
This number could actually.
The fifteen percent can actually be more than that at year end. Also, just to give a snapshot of our debt service remaining, actually what I've listed here is the the upcoming payments for twenty four, fiscal year twenty four. But our remaining principal balance is about three, thirty one, about thirty, thirty four million, as far as the the principal balance remaining for the general fund projects, which include the energy savings contract, the schools, and then what we financed here for the Morgan Center. The same with the water districts, we refinanced those, and we're looking at about four point six million remaining in principal. And there again, what I listed was showing the upcoming payments for fiscal year twenty four.
Where's payments at, Ben? Where are you looking at the payments?
The debt service.
Okay, all right, got you.
And next in the packet should be the water districts. I've broken them down between water district one and two. As of January, water district one had a budget of five hundred sixteen thousand, we've increased it to eighty five thousand, which came from the the bonds, we applied the the remaining funds there to debt service. So that shows the the funds being transferred here to make that payment. So that revised budget is six hundred and one thousand. We've actually spent two hundred eighty two thousand. And revenues I skipped over, we had three hundred fifty two thousand that we brought in so far, and our revenues over expenditures is sixty nine thousand.
Yes, let me ask you a question on that one. This this is water district one. I know we don't have salaries and bike and all that, because we don't have an employee. But we show insurance benefits.
Yeah, those are for the retirees that were assigned to.
Okay, okay, all right.
Water district two, we had a budget of one point three million. There again, we've increased that a hundred eighty three thousand for the, from the bonds. Funds remaining for debt service, revised budget is one point five million, we've brought in six hundred and seventy thousand. We've expended five hundred and ninety two thousand with revenues over expenditures of seventy seven thousand. Available budget is eighty nine thousand. And for the projection for the water districts, I just combined the two, there's twenty two actuals just for reference, the revised budget. Twenty three projections, I'm looking to bring in one point nine million in total revenues. I'm expend a one point six million, and before any non cash transactions, looking at two hundred and fifty eight thousand in revenues over expenditures. Once we take into depreciation, that number will decrease, so our, we will actually be in the hole ninety seven thousand just with that depreciation. The expense, once that's booked at year end. Actual cash at June thirty of twenty two was two point seven million, and looking at projected cash as of June thirty of twenty three at two point nine million. Any questions on the water districts?
Well, yeah, let me ask you this. So it's a lot of cash to be sitting on. How much are we required to sit on to that? Does that question make any sense?
It it does. I don't know if there is a requirement, but I know we're with the things that are getting ready to hopefully take place out at the waste water treatment plant, some of this cash will.
Okay, I'm just, I I just, I know we can't use it for other, because it's enterprise fund, but I just, you know, what else? What should we be doing with that kind of cash? But if, I know we're gonna do that work out there, so that'll probably eat up a lot of it. I didn't know if there was an requirement that we had to keep X amount in there or not.
And you, we were looking at that, some possibility of interconnections in our water systems.
Yeah.
As well as also anything on more firm bike extension or anything else, which.
But that.
We can't touch that now.
It costs us six, seventy eight dollars.
That was a nine million dollar project, so.
We got zero from the state.
Yes.
Miss Golston will be highly upset tomorrow.
I do think we need to just off regular, make contact with.
I I would, I have told Ms. Golston, I have not contacted Ms. Swan. I was gonna contact her this afternoon. Yeah.
Are we, I'm sorry, are we doing anything with the water system? Any, any kind of upgrade or anything?
Right now, we've actually just installed generators at our lift stations, or in process of installing generators at our lift stations. That has been our biggest issue there. We're looking at the the water tower that we have, it's not part of the water system, but it's at the Cascades facility. Look, we've been trying to get an engineer to give us a plan on improving that system for ever now. And but those are our major plans. The city of Larmour did just complete a study. I received it this week to look at the integration of the city and the county water systems. So that would be a conversation we can have as well. And you know, but we've not, fortunately, our water system is just over twenty years old. So it's still, believe it or not, considerably young. You know, so we've not had major changes yet, but we will, we will start having issues coming up, but we will, that, we do also have requests for expansions, but.
I I know this is off topic, but we went through the budget and everything, but you know, is that plant even running?
No, it is not.
That's not, so it's not running at all? So we're still buying our water from the city?
Yes, at, the water that we put in the water tower there, are we buying from MMA? But yes, we buy water from the city of Larmour and from MMA.
Okay.
And the last time we looked at upgrading that facility at Wagerum.
If we upgrade that facility at Wagerum, would we, would we have to continue to buy water from the city then, if we upgraded that?
If we, we looked at that ten, over ten years ago, looked at upgrading that facility then, because there was the concept of more county needing water. And bringing that facility back online and upgrading it to a potable system, the price tag was over fifteen million dollars.
Fifteen million. What are we paying the city for water every year? Is it in here?
Yes.
The water purchase lawn items. The water purchase loan items, let's see.
350,000 in water district two.
350,000, so if we, if we, if we.
180 for one.
Okay, so if we fix that plant, would it provide us, would we have, what I'm saying, would we still have to buy water from the city if we fixed that?
We would have to, if we upgraded that plant, and then, we would have to do the interconnect.
The connect the water lines.
We have to connect all of our water lines, because we have five.
Well, that needs to be done anyway.
Yeah, we would be able to do that, and at that point in time, we would be able to sell it, what a point of, what the return versus buying our water is, I've not calculated that, but that would take a, a significant amount of time.
So my question is, if we fix that plant, would, and, and connect the lines, that would take care of the county, plus, we could sell water also?
When we did the analysis, we would be, had the capacity to sell water, but we don't have the customers to sell water to that we're not already selling to.
Right.
Moore County, because the interest was for Moore County 10 years ago, but even through that process and the study, Moore County said, well, actually, we don't need it, because they've already connected to Harnett and Lee Counties, they're buying water from those two.